Obviously it wasn't.
Yeah, it was a nice.
Six year old.
Yeah, it was.
Good, good.
Three one Jason, you good?
Yeah.
Yes, we are ready.
Come on in.
Thank you. Okay, Town of Groveland, welcome. Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, 7:00 PM, Town Hall. We have a decent agenda tonight. We are going to talk about 931 Salem Street, temporary occupancy. We have a public hearing for 181R School Street, public hearing on 441 Main Street, SD Park. I believe that will be continued, comprehensive master plan discussion, town planner updates. And then we have some public hearings, zoning change, scheduled for public hearing, other items not reasonably. Okay, here we go. First up, 931 Salem Street.
Motion to open.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to open the meeting at 7:01. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
As to 931 Salem Street, I'm going to recuse myself for the same reason we've discussed in the past. I'm the neighbor of the applicant and it's my understanding that the best practice is for me to not only not take part, but to sit outside the duration of that part of the meeting. Let me in, let me in when we're done. Okay, thanks guys.
Eevee.
What'd you say?
It's a meeting.
Let's go home. All right, 931 Salem Street, request for modification to decision for site plan approval dated April 7th, 2017. Condition number seven, to allow for temporary occupancy to open the gas station portion of this site. We have 931 owner here, I think Mr. David is attorney. Sorry, say that again. Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, Mr. David.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Request?
Well, the temporary occupancy is being requested because there were some minor site repairs that we're not going to be able to do due to the weather. We brought these to the attention of your building commissioner, Mr. Jocelyn. He came out to the property, did a site inspection. He was comfortable with the fact that these items wouldn't interfere with the opening of the service station. And for that reason, we come before you. Just to give you a little update on what's going on with that, the project relative to distribution of petroleum is complete. I've been handling the interchange with the state fire marshal's office, which is obviously the most important ingredient in getting this station functioning. Pleased to report that the state fire marshal is satisfied with our filing. The one issue that was brought to our attention is that when we made the designation on the land license petition to the select board, that we did not describe the fuel tanks properly. We had it indicated as UST, which is underground tanks, due to the fact that the tanks are in fact underground. However, based on the information provided to us by the fire marshal's office, it should have been AST, which is above ground storage tanks, even though they're located below the ground. So we have filed with the select board for an amended land license. That hearing has been scheduled for the 18th. Annie from your board has, we've notified the newspaper. It went in today for publication. The abutters are going to be served this week with the notice. And upon, we expect the approval of the select board to that amended license. I would then direct, send the fire marshal's office a license. They typically come out 24 hours after they receive notification of a final inspection. That is simply a site walk. And at that point, they will, they will sign off and give us our permit to operate. So everything is in place. And we're just, you know, looking for that temporary occupancy because we haven't completed 100% of the site. I believe there's an adjustment to the handicap ramp. There's, I believe, some kind of curbing that requires digging and that's not able. And I believe the final striping has not been done. Other than that, we're ready to go and I can answer any further questions that the members might have relative to the subject.
Okay, Mr. Day, I actually, I read through everything and it looked up to enough. I don't know if you guys got a chance to read, went through, any questions, any additional questions?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
So I read, I read through everything, everything did look up to order. I'm just asking the board here if they have any questions for you directly.
Thank you.
All signage is up, so.
Yes.
Yep.
So we know how to flow in and flow out.
That is correct.
For safety. How about Fire Chief? We hear any comments from the Fire Chief, I know.
So his signature is part of the approval process that will need to go before the select board as well as the state fire marshal. So staff's recommendation is if you choose to move forward with the approval, that it be contingent upon select board approval as well as approval by the state fire marshal's office.
We don't, we don't have a problem with that.
I have no questions for the applicant. Jason?
No, I'm good.
TEC?
I'm sorry?
No comment.
Okay, TEC has no comment. Jason, from the perspective of select board, did you, has it been any type of discussion or concern from?
No, not as of yet, but.
No, okay, it'll be discussed.
Yeah, it'll be discussed.
We're still holding a bond on that, I would take it?
We still, I, doesn't release anything.
I'm not certain, I'd have to double check our records.
Only because there's a lot to finish.
Yeah, we would still need to hold onto the bond until everything's finished.
I do know that we're working with TEC in regards to a final as-built for the site and we're going forward with a few extra details that need to be added as Mr. David had alluded to in his presentation. But as to a bond, I'm not sure whether or not we are holding one, so I would need time to double check that in our records.
Do we want to, can we put a bond on it? Hold money in escrow? Just like every other project?
I don't think we have to probably find out if there's a bond first before we put one on, right?
Now how long would the temp CO, my question?
I think the idea, and it says the springtime is when everything else will be complete. At the ADA accessible, they have temporary handicap, they have the temporary lines. And I think, I think they have to finish off the, some of the hot topping possibly as well. I think I read.
I mean, is there a set, of course, because I don't know, is there a set amount of time that a temporary CO would be applicable before it expires? Or is that something that we said?
Six months, June?
But I mean, is that something that we said or is it standard temporary CO is good for this long?
It does look like we have a bond for 14,600 minus $4,000 for the conservation.
Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
So it looks like it's a $14,600 left in the escrow account for review. But as for a bond, I'm not seeing any bond for the site. So we have 14,600 minus $4,000 for conservation for TEC to continue their review of the site to ensure compliance and an as-built plan. But as for a bond or a performance bond for the site, I'm not seeing anything in our records. But again, it could just be because I don't have access to the information. So I would have to get back to the board at a later date with that.
Chris had asked about the temporary occupancy, is that for extent whatever time we set? Or is it unlimited to six months, is it?
Temporary occupancy is governed by the building commissioner, so the board would have no ability to condition such.
That was, that was my question, so if we, if we grant a temporary CO, it'll wind up course at some point if things aren't met, right?
The planning board essentially a sign off from, that's required by the building commissioner in order to proceed with a temporary CO.
Right. Based on the conditions. Gotcha.
So even if, so even without a bond, if the conditions aren't met, the temporary CO expires and then.
Could be removed, could be revoked at any time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm okay with it.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Jason, you good, right?
Mm-hmm.
Someone want to entertain a motion, vote for motion on, so it's pending Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal and local.
It's the select board and office of the state fire marshal.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve temporary CO for site plan approval for 931 Salem Street pending approval by the select board and state fire marshal's office.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved, unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
You're welcome, thank you, good luck. All right.
You want to call him back in?
Yeah.
You gotta leave him out there all night. Oh, there he is. Seems to me you were eavesdropping.
I think you'd be okay listening anyway, I, just a matter of taking part and abstaining from the vote.
For sure.
But personal preferences, I get that.
No, he's right, probably best, I believe.
Again, best practice.
Yeah, absolutely, especially with unknown.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, let's move. Can I put it away? Here it is. Okay, next up. Here we go. Public hearing, continued 181R School Street. Hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, the Town of Groveland Subdivision Rules and Regulations and Article 14 of the Groveland General Bylaws to hear application of Groveland Redevelopment LLC care of Louis Manucci, Jr., 231 Sutton Street, Suite 1B, North Andover, Mass. 1845. Requesting approval of a six lot definitive subdivision plan labeled 181R School Street, Groveland Massachusetts and Associated Storm Water Management and Land Disturbance Permit. The site is located in residential two zoning district. The proposed subdivision is located at 181R School Street, Groveland, Mass. 1834, Assistant Map 34, Parcel 13. What is the wish of the board? entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
So motion.
Seconded.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, staff, those in the audience here. Good to see everybody. For the record, Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group, thanks for having us again tonight. I will be as brief as I can, excuse me. We last met with you on December 17th. We had a few remaining punch list items to wrap up with the EC bills here tonight too. We also were waiting on the final sign off from the water and sewer department, who also had another engineering company reviewing the plans on their behalf. We did get the third, the third comment letter from TEC on, I believe, January 8th. We got the sign off from the water department on the 13th. We submitted a, what we hope is the final set of plans on the 20th quorum. Here we are tonight on February 4th. So I don't have anything else for you other than, you know, it's our position, we've satisfied all the technical obligations of the application process. It's been a good process for us, I think we have a really good project before you tonight. Eric Loth is here as well tonight as the applicant, if you do have any questions for him. And I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. The only thing that I would like to review tonight is, I know the largest concern for the public and mainly the abutters surrounding community is the water runoff, the storm water management. Could you, I don't know Rebecca, if we have anything up to, but if you give us a little more detail around, and this can go back and forth with TEC to discuss and make sure that we are in alignment with the proposed plan and just make sure so that the public can understand a little bit better that we will be covered based on numbers. Obviously, rain we cannot control, things have been crazy, but at least kind of talk through that because I think that is the number one concern for all of us is that, that layer, that level of land is, call it 100, 100 foot, and it slopes down, I think one was, I'm not positive, but I looked at one, was Ann Street four, at four? I mean, what's the grade? Oh, I forget their backyard, but it is a steep grade there. And that is a major concern, if anything kind of hits that hill and rolls down, it's going quick. And obviously, water, water wants runs south, so just want, if you could give a little more detail and it's between the two of you, whoever wants to. I know that TEC is given a sign off on storm water management, but that is my primary concern is storm water, kind of reviewing that so that the public can hear during the public hearing.
Sure, I'll do my best. I think first and foremost, this has been, this is a new practice. This has been going on for a century plus where we've been studying and learning about storm water. And over the last 25 years of my, my professional career, I've seen two and a half iterations of the state storm water code. The most, the latest one still isn't in effect yet, but we're already adopting most of the practices that are in that, that code that's coming out. You know, the project's been, been reviewed by, by, by your own engineer as well. And I'm, Bill will speak for that. But from our part, you know, the, the engineering principles and practices that we apply in any development project or any project period, whether it's a single family home, you know, addition, where you're, you're looking at impervious coverage and adding a dry well in, checking soils to a subdivision of this nature to, you know, 70 unit, you know, 30 acre, you know, forested to neighborhood scale development, which, you know, and bigger. We studied existing conditions, we did that thoroughly. We did extensive soil testing throughout the property to get a good comfort level with the types of soils. We had the benefit of this application, actually be able to speak with abutters and go out to those properties and look and get that, that testimony as well, which is a piece we don't always get, especially at the onset, which was a good process to go through, saw some of the issues that were occurring. And we made further adjustments to the design to help reinforce and alleviate those, those existing issues. 100% of the developed part of this property goes through the storm water management system. So we're going to slow the water down, we're going to hold it on the property. Allow it to infiltrate back into the ground, just like it occurs in the existing condition today. I guess without going through a full college thesis for people to get in college credits, you know, the technical reports, the plans, the peer reviews, your commentary, the information received here gives me full confidence that, that once this project is done, it, you know, water conditions will be better afterwards than they are now. Because we're just, we're, we're basically, you know, the standards that we're held to are so, there's so many factors of safety built into it. And the practices are so tried and tested that, you know, I have, I have strong confidence, but I'll let your engineer speak, speak on your behalf. If there's any specific questions, I can certainly answer them. We are, you know, we have a series of different mechanisms to put water back into the ground, hold on to the site. We're doing that on the lots as well as for the road, so we're spreading that around, so it's all just relying on one system. We don't have all our eggs in one basket. It's so different when, you know, the, the abutting properties were developed. There's reasons why there's some water runoff, runoff issues on Ann Street, which I got a chance to look at firsthand. As you know, it's a big grade drop off and they, they built those lots, that was a big cut into the hillside. We're not doing any big cuts here, we're more or less following the shape of the land. If anything, we're, we're filling up in areas, as I described, we're kind of building up and pulling the water back away from the residences to the back of the property and the side. When Ann Street was developed, they didn't have the storm water standards that we have today. They're changing constantly. The storm intensities we're using today are the, they're the extreme precipitation rates. They're 30 to 40% more rainfall we're counting for than we were just six years ago. So we're continuing to build more resiliency into the designs. Initially that the treatment of the storm water is, is much better than what it was, you know, 10, 20, 30 years ago. We're looking at phosphorus removals, we're looking at suspended solids, nitrate nitrogens. The systems we're putting into place are better and more effective at taking care of that. So the quality of the water running off is also better. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions, it's kind of a broader, broader conversation. But personally, my experience, we've never had any issues ever with one of our designs. We've had some pretty big storms that we put them through. Did any of, any board members have questions?
I had a question for TEC's representative. So something that stuck with me, one of the prior hearings about this was, it sounded like you equivocated about whether the, the system as proposed and as, you know, set up would be better than what the current situation was. I think the phrase that you or someone from TEC said was that if the modeling is accurate, or something like that.
Yes.
So can we, can we agree tonight that in, in your estimation, the modeling is accurate?
Yes, I would say so, yeah.
So we feel very confident.
Yeah.
You can opine with some confidence that you think that the system, based on everything you looked at and based on the modeling to the, you know, to the level that you understand it.
Yeah.
That you think that this project will result in better water, you know, storm water management than, than without the project.
Yes, I can agree to that. So after reviewing the plans or reviewing the calcs and obviously the revisions to the plans as well.
Sure.
As he vividly described here, it's, the entire system is following the modern standard for storm water design and also utilizing BMPs or basins in this case to help mitigate treatment of storm water as well to help meet the new standard that's also soon to arrive as well.
Right.
So, but simply to answer your question, yes, yeah.
Okay, that, that's really, that was the only thing that was sort of sticking in my brain about it.
And I believe TEC is going to be out during the site construction throughout the whole.
I believe so, yeah, no. I'm not positive where the contract is on that, but I believe so, yeah, yeah.
They typically provide construction monitoring for the community, so I would assume the same would apply here.
So then it would be, that they'd be confident about how it's working in concept, but then also in practice as it's getting, as it's getting built?
Correct.
Okay, cool, that sounds good.
You want to add anything?
No.
Another concern is that from, from the town, that once this, if this is approved and once that the construction is started, what if we have a storm and there is an issue? What, what happens then? Who owns it, who fixes it?
I'll tell you what, that seven inch rainstorm that we had in 25 minutes or over an hour, nobody accounts for that. Am I correct?
Yeah, so generally speaking, you design to the 100 year storm.
Over two days.
Over a 24 hour period, so that's over eight inches of rain over the course of 24 hours, continuous.
20 minutes.
Yeah, it was, yeah, the, the storm you're referencing was definitely an interesting pulse that I don't think anyone foresees. But as far as modeling and design goes, you have to pick a certain level of storm to design to, simply because if you over-design something, you'll end up having basins that are so large on a property that it will basically encompass the entire property. So you do have to pick a level and standard where you basically have to say, okay, this is where we're going to design to and we're going to make sure it handles at the very least this level of storm, if not worse. It's kind of like the concept of saying like a roadway, you need to design for an 18 wheeler. You don't design it for, you know, six wide 18 wheelers, you only design it for what the road is likely to see its, like, biggest use case. So in a storm design model, typically the 100 year storm for a general residential development is the design standard and that's what the state holds you to as well. So to answer the question of what happens in that much larger storm, water will go where naturally goes today, which is obviously down the hill. And there are systems in place like the emergency spillway in the basin that the water will end up flowing through. So beyond, I guess hypotheticals, it's difficult to say what exactly would happen in the worst, worst case scenario, which is beyond a 100 year storm, but that's simply the standard we designed to to this day.
But that wouldn't, I mean, if you did nothing, if you didn't develop the property at all, you'd have a worse situation in a heavier storm, right?
Exactly.
Still have erosion.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh yeah, one thing I'd like to add, that we miss all the time, I don't know if we can do it. Where's that water line, I think it's across the street, right? You guys are going to do a tap and sleeve, I believe it's on the opposite side of the street. I want to make sure that that, you know, every single street crossing sinks. I want to make sure it's done right, you know? Our roads are in great condition. Not really, but we don't want to add to the problem.
We typically like to let them sit for a year, so you'd see the, the trench we put in, that's coming in earlier in the process. As they finish the road, they're going to put their binder down. Then it's going to sit with binder for the home construction period. They're not going to do the finished paving until the homes are done or close to done because you don't want to put the finished paving down and have construction equipment from the homes destroy that. And so when they do the finished paving, that's typically where you see the miller section of the street that was impacted from the utility connections. At that point, you've had the trenches sitting for a year, so any settlement that's going to occur, occurs. And you get a nice finished product at the end of it.
We just want to make sure they come back and fix.
Yeah, the final, yeah. I mean, that's, my development was left with binder and not ever top coat, like on the driveways, that kind of stuff. So that's, yeah. But that was long, well before I was there.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, it's fine, it was never came back and finished. Other random things that I'm, I'm thinking. As I was reading the sewer, the drainage, it shows that the homes are electric ejecta pumps, right? And then is the main line in the street gravity fed? Or is there an ejecta pump at the end of the cul-de-sac that has to pump to the, the main? It's gravity. It's gravity fed. Main is, main is going to be gravity fed and then the homes are ejecta pumps to get.
So force, what is it, an E1 or whatever, E5?
Yeah. Proprietary, yeah, but the, the owners will have options if an owner wants to upgrade to a bigger, if they want to do X, Y, and Z. But it's pretty common practice with the private ejecta pumps and they're pretty resilient as well. And there's, there's backup storage in them in case there's a power outage for a period of time. So that says that the home grade level versus street grade level, street is higher naturally. So it's naturally coming down from street level down to the homeowner because they can't meet the main. Right.
It's also my understanding that you guys are going to stay on with these site contractors. You guys are going to.
The applicant intends to build the road and all the infrastructure up to finish lots. And whether they proceed with the lots after that is what's, what's up in the air. When likely, they'll bring in a professional building contractor that would do the, the building management.
I don't know if we can put that in there, you know, if we move forward with this.
There's, if I, there's protections built in with bonding to ensure that they can't go anywhere until the board.
No, I, I know that, it's just you guys offer that he's going to maintain, you know, he's going to do the site work.
And then I, I think I already got my answer to, on Exhibit A, lots two and three, it shows that there are two drainage split, where the spillway is, that will need to have access by the town, it's going to be owned by the town.
by the town, because it's going to be owned by the town. And then zoning. Try to do some research.
That's good. I've got one. So the parcel A.
I was just going to ask you about that.
That's what it was.
We, we've talked about this kind of back and forth, but we really haven't had much of a definitive, it feels like a, like a very vague description of what's going to happen with Lot, with parcel A. Do we have any better understanding of like what, what the situation is? At one point, we suggested that perhaps the homeowner should take it because then he would maintain it, but he would get, he would get the property in return. Like, where are we, where are we with this?
Thank you. Eric Loth from Groveland Redevelopment. We've had some internal discussions about it too. And we were thinking, I think before we came up the idea of having an HOA, we said, well, maybe the best thing is to give it to the neighbor. And once we said, well, we're going to have an HOA there, it was, well, should we hold on to it? Maybe you need a little bit of snow storage, or maybe you put a bench there because there's kids that end up living in the houses. So I think we're still a little bit up in the air. I think for now it suggests the HOA, but we could always, you know, talk to the neighbor again and see if he wants to take it over. But it might make sense to hold on to it if there's some reason. But at least there'd be a structure in place. The HOA could hold it as opposed to it just being this random, undersized, not legal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's...
Are you going to plant that section that?
Not planning to touch it.
You can't, what's that?
We're not planning to touch it right now. Because actually, we're putting trees in to that, that piece along the lot line would be better.
We want to beef up the screening along there if it's...
Can't beef it, you can only beef it up so far so you can still get a vision of School Street when you turn on and off.
What, what trees are in that area? That's, that's where they are, what existing trees. There's a few on the, they're right on the lot line there.
That lot line that touches the street to be named, that one-foot area, that's, you know, that's going to be, only because, you know, you've got a sliver. So who maintains it? If the homeowner on the Lot 1 goes to maintain it, I think he can call him, he's trespassing on his land. It's just, we're going to come up, right? So that would be like, do you just plant that so nobody can trespass? And it asks you to make some screening?
TEC's recommendation is that the ownership and maintenance be clarified before, as a condition of approval. That sounds, sounds like that makes sense to me as well.
Yeah. I would suggest that the HOA, if we name the HOA for now, because that way, you know, if everybody pays into some of the dues, they can maintain all the detention basins, go and check them every year. And they can also, if that's planted, they can mow the grass. They can, that's what we've done in other subdivisions. But that would be my suggestion for now, if that works for everybody.
And it could, it would be part of the conditions.
Yeah.
Not necessarily just the plan, just the plan itself, but part of it.
That's going to be, what's the definition of trespass? Any good way to...
I mean...
That's, I, that's a sticking point.
Yeah. I mean, you like to think that people will use logic, but I used to have an old man that shot me with a BB gun when I went across his lawns.
You're still here to talk about it, though, right?
Wasn't a good shot.
No, he wasn't, thankfully.
Okay. That's ahead. I had the zoning with one, lot ejecta pumps. Obviously, the update on the, the TEC report, I did see it start to come back. And then you guys had your response to it as well. I don't think that the 20th is in here to review. But those are the, of the comments that came, was the back and forth between TEC and the Moore and Cameron Group, everything was addressed. And did anyone else see anything that jumped out to them that?
Other than what we've discussed, I haven't.
No, it's good. It looks like it's fine.
It did recommend a few conditions. I think the three conditions recommended in there, if you wanted to talk through those.
The HOA docs?
That was one of them.
Yep.
There was a discussion about the Water and Sewer Department is in charge of the water and sewer.
Right.
We've covered that. So what was, refresh my memory, what was the third one?
The letter.
The lighting.
The lighting is, yep.
That's what the Groveland Department.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, everything was accounted for. I think the main thing was, well, the condition, a lot of it's going to be around the conditions, after, after, if there's an approval of the site plan, then the conditions on whether the HOA and the other things would, would come about from there. But as far as any other... I know we talked about sidewalk. It is halfway around. It doesn't have to come on. I was, I've kind of looked at the sidewalk, and I don't know if it's on here. But it shows that the end of the driveways are pervious?
Impervious.
Impervious. So you're leaving partial of the end of the driveway towards the street. How does that, I'm trying to picture how that works. You're going to have the driveway impervious up to a certain point?
It's all, it's all impervious.
All the way, all the way to the roadway? Okay.
We're going to encourage that with the lot owners regardless, but it was a little much for this process. So we pulled all the pervious pavement off of the plans. Everything is standard conventional pavement.
Okay.
Pervious pavement is good, but you also have to like baby it. You've got to, what homeowner is going to vacuum his driveway, you know? And once you sand it, it's, you're in trouble.
The only other thought I had was about the sidewalk not coming to the last, at least the last home, was more so for...
All the way, all the way to the end. Okay. We're going to encourage that with the lot owners regardless, but it was a little much for this process. So we pulled all the pervious pavement off of the plans. Everything is standard conventional.
That's a replay.
Thanks, Chris.
That's what I sound like.
It looks like it was coming from a recording. Someone must have recorded it and just ringing it back. That's weird.
How'd you sound? You tell me, I don't know. Well, I guess we'll find out.
Coming from, say, Lot, is that Lot 2, Lot B?
The one, the one straight back is Lot, is that right?
First one on the left.
Lot 1.
Lot, we've got Lot 1 here, Lot 2 here.
A1, 2, okay, gotcha. Lot 1, being that if Lot 1 ended up being handicap, right? So now they, there's no, as they come out, their only line is directly to the street, right? They're coming off of a driveway directly into the street. There's no sidewalk for them to walk around. They would have to cross the street.
Same with Lot 2.
Yeah. So that was my, my thought of not, for not bringing is handicap accessibility. Lot 2, same, kind of same thing. They have to at least go across the street to get to a sidewalk. What was the purpose of not bringing it all the way around? I know that was Wally, one of Wally's concerns, right? I know that we don't need to bring it all the way through to the other, to the other side of the street down, but at least to the other pieces of property.
We typically bring it to the end of the cul-de-sac, knowing that people aren't going to walk away from School Street. And then back around, they're just going to walk across, you know, the driveway is used as basically the accessible ramp out in homes. And then they go across. So, but we're, I mean, I don't think there's any issue if you want to extend it. Wherever that last driveway ends up, we can extend it around the cul-de-sac to hit that last driveway. Keep in mind, the drive, you know, the driveways and the house designs that are shown on this, the house designs are further down. So what will eventually be there might look a little different. So...
No, I mean, I had that concern as well in the sidewalks. Someone lives on a street with no sidewalks right, right now. But, but I see the point. And then with the constraints of the site as well, having, having sidewalks on both sides would, would hamper the width of the road at some level, I would think. Certainly when it comes to the, that tight corner of Lot, parcel A rather. But as it lays out, it meets the requirement, so. And if the developer is commenable to do one way he can.
It looks like that on sidewalk.
Is there a problem to extend it that way? Like, would that affect any of the other aspects negatively?
No, I mean, it shouldn't have...
Required dimensions and things?
You also have anything? I'm, I'm thinking as I'm reading through things.
Jay, anything?
No, I mean, it's already been planned. It's, it wouldn't affect anything.
Yeah. And I'll go back to my question because I don't know if we got a full answer. The residents can hear as well. Project's complete, I would say, beyond the Moore and Cameron Group. We have some, the builders come in, contractors come in, build homes. And, and I'm going back to the stormwater management, obviously. Everything's done. We'll go to the full level. We have, we have as-built, everything comes back, street sign-off, name the street, street sign-off comes back to the town. And there are, there's an issue with water. What happens then?
There shouldn't be.
Correct. There shouldn't be.
It's going to be checked and balanced and...
I just, I'm putting it out there for everyone to hear because that's, that's the main concern. So what, what is, what happens? What's next steps? Things like that, so people can understand.
So essentially, what the board will do is they'll issue a decision. They will put conditions in their decision. Usually, we would try and be very detailed with those conditions of approval. So what they would need to do in order to proceed to the next step. So when you lay out your decision, you'll have the background, all of the information that was being proposed. Then you'll have your findings of facts, which will be all of the discussions that we've had back and forth, including the memos from TEC. And then you'll have your conditions underneath, which will say, prior to a building permit, you must provide your final sewer plans. You must provide any other additional documentation. We will then take that internally, review it. And if they tried to go pull a building permit, the building commissioner would deny them because they haven't met the conditions of the permit. So the checks and balances that you're talking about is the decision that the board ultimately has to draft. So when it starts to go further along, then it will get into occupancy. Well, if they don't have a street name and they're looking for an occupancy permit, they're not going to get their occupancy permit because obviously that's a public safety issue. So there's all these different conditions that would need to be met by the applicant before they proceed with the next step. And that, again, will all be caught through the planning office, as well as any other departments that are required, and ultimately, the building commissioner.
Okay. So that, and that's Z state, right? So that's after Moore and Cameron come in and we go to builders. Prior to that, before, say, you guys build, you build this out, lay it out, everything's done. We have no builder, we have no builders that want to come onboard. Hey, I want nothing to do with this area. It's, seems like a nightmare. Unlikely, right? But just hypothetically. Then we have water issues. While you guys are still owners and have not sold off lots, what happens then?
So ultimately, what's going to happen is that because they're not building on the lots, they can't seek roadway acceptance because they own the lot. So that means that they own that roadway until they finish the development. So if there are issues with the roadway, or if there are issues with the individual lots, then they will be ultimately responsible for that because it's not a town-accepted roadway. So that being said, they need to meet the conditions for drainage and laying out the road. But if there's no houses on the lot, what good does the town have at getting street acceptance? It makes no sense. So they would need to have a performance bond that we would put in place and decide by the planning board, that they would have X amount of money that would help being, would help be decided by TEC, who would take the quantities and the estimates of what construction materials would be required to move forward with that. And then as they meet those, they can seek a reduction. But there would still be monies that would be held aside until we receive our final as-built plans. So again, there's ways that we can tie the applicant to the roadway and finishing the project, that they can't just build a roadway and drainage and walk away from the project. And that, again, will be outlined in your decision and your condition of approval to allow them to proceed.
And then also, at all points, the owner, the owner of the road is responsible for the road. So if the road is improperly made, then people would have a private cause of, cause of action against the owner. So at, you know, at all points, you know, the owner of the, you know, whoever it is at a given time is, is at least in some way potentially responsible.
And it's also imperative for them to move forward because they don't receive town services. So as part of the decision, mailboxes will need to be out on the roadway. They cannot be placed internal to the development. They will not receive trash services, and they will not receive plowing. So as they move forward, all conditions of what we had for all of our other developments, that is not serviced by taxpayer dollars until they meet the conditions of the decision, go through the street acceptance process, which must be approved at town meeting, not just the planning board. So it goes through the select board for the laying out of the way, the planning board for a recommendation. And then ultimately, all the residents and voters get a chance to say, yes, we will accept it, or no, we will not. So there are, again, stipulations in place that have that process to ensure that they are doing what they need to be doing.
And if they walk away, the lawn's big enough where we, the town, will put it back. Correct?
And that's why we tie it to the quantity. So if there's, you know, a certain amount of pavement that they didn't put down, we will make sure that we keep that amount of money held so that we can use it and at least finish the roadway. If there was no one there, there would be no need for us to use that money. But if there was residents that lived along there, we would want to make sure that we accommodate. And we would have the monies to do so. And again, TEC would be able to help us make sure that we're quantifying those correctly.
Thanks.
I did also just want to address a concern that was brought up by a local resident about the, the offset between, between the streets, particularly between the proposed road and Parker Street. Yeah, there's a question on the distance between. Looking at it, I don't see an issue where it looks like to meet 150 feet. And it looks very similar to what we have between Georgia Street and Carolina Road as well. So there's already, there's already some acceptance there on that front.
Do you want to, do you want to have TEC briefly speak to that?
Yes. So we've previously, previously reviewed the exact distance you're talking about. And given the fact that that distance already is present on that road as well, and there's no significant traffic concerns with the sub-development as well, then we didn't see a concern.
Is that impacted at all based on what happens with parcel A?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, parcel, the, that's the parcel A is the front parcel. I mean, that would be the biggest concern that we have. We see that in a lot of different developments. We have Apple Blossom Lane, and we have plenty of little slivers all over the place that are in tax title. That was part of the development, and they had to carve pieces off. And they said they were for open space, and the planning board would take them. We never took them properly. Or they said that they were going to be merged with other properties. Oakland Terrace is a prime example of that. They would never merge with those properties. So you have these either landlocked parcels or parcels that are non-buildable lots that we can't utilize. And it becomes very difficult from a tax purpose because they're in tax title, and we just can't take land off of people's plate. You have to pay the property taxes. And to get the owners back onto the table, to pay the property taxes, to then have town meeting accept the property. And then you're not making any money off of the property, which is a disservice to the taxpayer. So it does become one of those more complicated situations. But in all my years, I haven't seen a more easy way to go about it in terms of development. I don't know if the developer or the engineers have a better way, but I do, it's not uncommon for things like this to happen. That doesn't mean that it's right. So if there is a way that we can fix that beforehand, we should. But the conditions won't change that. Because my biggest fear with those parcels is that when you approve a subdivision plan, you're approving the creation of those lots. Because those lots don't exist. You're approving the creation of a road that creates the creation of the lot. So once you create that lot, you've created a non-buildable lot, and that's a taxable piece of property. So where's the protections that we can put in place to make sure that either somebody takes that, or somebody's going to pay taxes on that? I mean, you should pay your taxes, but that doesn't mean that everybody does.
If it's part of a homeowners association, then it would be subject?
It would be helpful. But at the same time, if you moved into a subdivision, would you assume that you're going to be part of a HOA? Not really. So we have...
That's only going to be on the deed.
It would be, but...
So you needed, you would have to assume that.
We have HOAs on land here, in Groveland, that don't realize that they're in charge of the cul-de-sac and the other parcels. And there's, you know, issues with transfers of land to the HOA, and knowing that they're going to be responsible for them. So there's always that caveat that you just... So there's always that caveat, that you just never know. It's better than nothing, but is it a sound solution? The sound solution would be that the parcel is with a property.
As people move out, first thing, it always works. But as people leave, and nobody says, hey, listen, we have an HOA.
Yeah.
Like over by S D.
Yes, when we did Graham Way. That's exactly a prime example. We have a cistern, and we have a cul-de-sac, and we have parcel B. That's all part of an HOA. They didn't realize they had an HOA. Then they had to form the HOA, because the developer didn't process the HOA properly once they mortgaged and sold the lot. So sometimes it can be very messy.
Which kind of brings me back to the initial thing that we had been talking about for some meetings, which is, why, has anyone reached out to the owner adjacent where it would kind of make that property, like that would be a complete property? Is, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if that happened, ever.
I mean, it doesn't sound like it, but I know Jason doesn't...
No, it didn't. I mentioned that way back in the beginning stages.
Would it be better just to make it part of the road, so it comes to the town as with the road?
That, I, I'm not sure whether or not that's a, an option. That would make sense in terms of making sure that the land gets transferred properly. But I don't think it really would necessarily be legal, per se. And if they have plans for utilizing the lot for interim purposes, I'm not sure. You know, since we're not taking the land yet, and they would be responsible for it. So, I mean, I think it might be something...
Do they need that sliver to make that lot one illegal?
Well, they can't do it for the first lot, because if they do that, then it doesn't meet the law regularity requirements, if I'm not mistaken. So if they take that and they put it into the first lot, it doesn't. If they take it and put it into the homeowner's lot that is there currently, that wouldn't be an issue. But to leave it as part of the development, and this is consistent with developments all over town, not singling out this one. We, like I said, I can name about 10 of them in Groveland that exist, where little slivers of land are cut off. This would be one of those where it can't go to the lot in order to make it compliant. And now it's up for the owner to figure out whether or not they want to work with the abutter. And that's more of a private matter, not something that we deal with.
Yeah, but, I mean, honestly, I mean, if we're questioning the HOA as far as, you know, maintaining of parcel A, I mean, the HOA is going to be responsible for much more important things than the maintenance of parcel A, right? So if we are questioning the HOA managing, mowing the grass in parcel A, where does that put into questioning the other things the HOA will be responsible for? As, as the plots of land go through their evolution of buy, sell, buy, sell, buy, sell through multiple owners, right?
Well, every time it gets bought or sold, the deed is going to specify the same thing. And so if you're buying properties and not reading what your deed says, that's, that's caveat emptors.
No, but...
You know, I mean, like...
Well, that's kind of exactly what I'm saying, though, is that, you know, if we're not, if we're not questioning the HOA as far as maintenance of the water drainage, then to me, I'm not necessarily concerned about...
So you're saying, you're saying, you're saying that this is a relatively minor matter relative to the...
The rest of responsibilities of the HOA, right.
If you look at a, like a Zillow list or one of those things, it usually does say whether there's an HOA and what the payment is per year. We had thought about before attaching it to the first lot, but like your administrator said, you'd have to waive the lot. And then...
Doesn't make it...
We also thought it'd be a nice place for a sign, and then I talked to the neighbor, but it's been probably two years. So I could offer to him, and he might say, well, I don't really want it.
Can we check and see what he says?
He might not want to pay taxes.
He, he might not want to, but he might want to. If it's, if he wants to, and it solves the problem of, you know, what to do with this property.
If I, if I could maybe offer a solution, because I think the reason we're struggling with this right now is because nobody in this room has any idea what, what or who wants that parcel A. The only thing we all agree on is we want to make sure it's taken care of, because they don't want it to be an eyesore. The town wants tax revenue. It's in everybody's interest to make sure it's addressed.
Well, I don't want it to be overgrown, so it blocks traffic.
Right, well, precisely. But, so I think what I would suggest in this scenario is we're already anticipating a condition that discusses the HOA. Why don't we fold this into a similar type of condition, where when we come in with that, we'll have an actionable plan that you can review with the HOA. We'll know a heck of a lot more. Once the road's built, we've had chance. I'm sure Eric will have spoken with the abutter at that point. You know, it's a tough time of year to find people, because we're all bunkered in our homes. And, like I said, we have no idea if he wants it, but if he doesn't want it, the HOA, and we can put their terms in the HOA document on how it's going to be maintained. Or if the town wants it for open space, we can do that, too.
It doesn't sound like it.
I don't know if the town would be...
It doesn't sound like a resounding the town wants it for open space.
I mean, I can imagine a likely soccer game in that, in that parcel right there, but...
Yeah, this is a casualty of M G L forty A and the subject control law. It's just, it's every, you're not the only town, too. This is every, every subdivision ends up with something like this, for the most part. It just is, so...
No, that's reasonable.
The other question that was on the letter that we received today spoke about addressing water-related issues. That when the measurements were, were figured, considered, it was measured by runoff and not flow.
Discharge or runoff?
Discharge, discharge, but not measure maybe flow? And just some clarification around the measurements on whether we factor in that discharge versus overflow? Or is there any type of potential issue?
Sure. You, you just use synonyms for the same thing. Flow, discharge, rate of runoff, rate, it's cubic feet, so volume per time. Cubic feet per second. So that's what we're, that's a standard design, too. That's when you, flow is established, that's when you have problems. Volume, which is another unit measurement, is not a standard, because volume only is a problem if it's hitting at a certain time, which gets us back into flow. But in this case, we're actually mitigating for a lot of the volume as well. And that hundred-year storm we've been talking about doesn't get to that spillway, that emergency situation. So we're containing, holding everything, designing for flow. The flow accounts for the time it takes for the water runoff to property. It takes longer in a wooded condition than it does in a developed condition. That's why we put in these retention systems to hold it and then slowly release it. So...
So the short answer is, these terms are synonymous.
Synonymous. Same, same terms.
Excellent. Thank you.
As my old boss would have said, it's rate of stormwater runoff.
If there's any direct questions. All right, does anyone else up here have any questions?
No, I'm satisfied with the discussion.
No, I have no questions for applicant.
Jason?
Nope.
Okay. I will now open it up to any additional questions that may not have been able to be heard by the public. Like I said, like, we talked about the main concern was water runoff. Heard some feedback on what happens once it hap, if there is ownership by Moore and Cameron full. There's some people in the audience. Do you guys have anything additional that you'd like to ask?
Dawn Soini, six oh eight Alyssa Drive in Whitestone. Before I go, I'd like to just make one comment on the one-hundred-year storm runoff that T E C said. They, it's going to be better when they put the road in and clear all the land to go down, opposed to what it is now. I'd just kind of like to know how you base that. I mean, right now, we have woods leaves that would slow that water down before it would get from 104 feet down to 72. I don't know if you've been out there and seen the land, but I disagree that it's going to be better once they clear the land. So I'm just disagreeing with that statement. Besides that, you've gotten my emails, so I'm not going to get into it. But I appreciate the board. But with all the changes that have been made in the beginning, from the Cameron group to T E C, I don't know why, you know, with the omission of the detention pond that you put in, why some other drainage formula wouldn't have, or system wouldn't have been figured at some point to, to see if it really works now. Because you make all these changes, and that stays the same. So I'm wondering, is T E C endorsing this project from the beginning to the end, willing to take some sort of responsibility to the town if it fails in any way? Hundred-year storm, you know, because you can give me this hundred-year storm thing, and if it happens, Whitestone Village is the ones that are going to suffer from it, and you're allowing this to come in. I'd rather see bigger basins and bigger detention ponds and not need it than deal with something down the road if we're not covered in some way. So if T E C is saying, don't worry about it, are they accepting any responsibility? And if not, is the town going to accept any responsibility to the Whitestone Village residents? It should something happen. I mean, this just doesn't, this won't affect just the immediate ones that might get flooded out, but it will affect all the units, because all our HOA fees will go up. We're older people there now, many of them complaining about HOA fees. Can't afford to be fixing a problem created by overdeveloping five acres. They're not willing to put less lots, because they want to make more money, but it shouldn't be at the expense of Whitestone Village. So I guess my question is, is the town going to accept any responsibility should this fail? Is T E C going to accept any responsibility should this fail?
Do the town accept responsibility when Whitestone went in there? When I lived across the street, a Parker Road, it was woods, and all of a sudden, we have Whitestone.
Yeah? How many years ago?
I moved there in ninety. It wasn't there.
Yeah, but let me ask you. Did they create a problem that they did not fix?
They created more traffic. It's called progress.
But, so...
If they have, if they meet the criteria, meet the bylaw, the engineers go through a process to iron it out.
Yeah.
I don't have an engineering degree.
Nope.
I mean, so we're, the town's relying on, the town is relying on them.
Are they going to take responsibility? Are they that sure that this is going to work? That they're going to take responsibility for you to go to get, get it fixed, so that we don't suffer?
Well, in any situation, we're, we're laypersons to an extent, right? We're not, we're not a bunch of experts about, you know, about all things, right?
I feel for your problem. I feel for your situation.
So, so the fix for that is we hire experts, and we rely on them. And if their, if their opinions are wildly off-base, and there are problems as a result, then, well, they, you know, there are consequences for that, you know, in terms of what the town could do and things like that, of course. But there's not some sort of, you know, this isn't a situation where you can, you ensure that there's never going to be a problem. You know, what they've opined to us and the board today is that they think that the result, based on their expert advice, which is better than yours or mine, that based on these systems, these systems are better than the natural woods and the natural conditions. That's what they've said over and over and over again, both the developer and then our people, after we've, you know, we've focused the issue on it, too, a little bit. I had a concern just today about, you know, hey, I don't want you to hedge. Tell me, tell, you know, we got the answer. And so we wouldn't substitute, like, a layperson's decision over, over the engineers that we hired to give us the advice that we need about something that we're, you know, we're not experts. And, you know, nobody could reasonably expect us to do that. This is the, this is the, you know, like, the best practice for the, for the board. And, you know, short of, you know, you can't guarantee what will or won't happen, but if they're telling us that not only is it as good, it's better. It's an improvement. So all the folks who are abutters have a better water condition under the expert advice of our own hired, you know, our hired guns. You know, like, you know, it's, it's hard to controvert that, because someone thinks, well, I don't think so, without, without being an expert in, you know, stormwater management and things like that, not having seen, you know, Legion projects and things. So that's, that's the best we can do. I don't know, I don't know what else you would have us do.
So...
I would have you, if you have that much faith in them, in T...
Well, we hired them.
Yeah, and I agree.
Right?
That, that you, that you honor that if damages are done because of mistakes or errors. I mean, Cameron Group had many mistakes that T E C had to fix. Who knows what other mistakes could be made? But if there are mistakes made, why should Whitestone Village pay the price? In other words, who, why can't somebody carry, why should we have to carry insurance for something that you're going to allow that, because the zoning board allowed? But you could have smaller houses and less development and less chance of affecting neighbors, but you're going to allow the maximum that they want.
Right. It's wild speculation, right? So we can't say, well, you can't have this house, because we think, based on something that is contrary to what our own experts tell us. You know, we can't say just because we say so. It's, you know, we got to have reasons for the things we do. And, and the best way to get laypeople to have, you know, expert information is to hire experts. If the experts turn out to be not so expert, then there are remedies for that. And if, if that were to something to happen, then I'm sure the town would exercise those remedies. But, you know, they're not going to make some independent guarantee that there's never going to be some flooding in an, in an area, in a situation where you might have a, you know, one-in-a-thousand-year flood. Who knows? But what they've told us, and they've been, they've made no bones about it, is that it's going to be better than it is right now. You guys are suffering, are experiencing a benefit in your, in your stormwater management, according to everybody who's present. And, and so, you know, in that sense, it's better for the town.
Wouldn't that be a guess, though?
No, it's, it's not a guess. It's based on...
I mean, we haven't had a hundred-year water storm to see to compare so far.
No, it doesn't, whether it's a one-year storm, or a one-day storm, or a one-million-year storm, the, the difference between better water management and worse water management would be the same. So it doesn't matter the, the type of storm. What matters is how the systems are set up to accommodate that storm, whatever it is. So they're saying it's better now, or better as-built than it is now. You're going to have a better situation, so they say. And, and they're saying they trust the modeling, and they're saying that, you know, like, so, this is, this is their opinion. And it's not just some pie-in-the-sky thing. They've done, they've done work and, you know, shown, and they've shown their work, which is all available for everyone to see as well.
I don't know, but I know before, when you guys were up at the town, you said you didn't want something to happen, that something happened somewhere else. Obviously, something, somebody made a mistake somewhere, right? Or miscalculation, or whatever. I just don't want to see it happen here to...
No one does, and we've spent a lot of time talking about it.
A lot of time.
Yeah. Nobody wants that.
I think this is built to a higher standard or a stricter standard than Whitestone was in the nineties. Stormwater has changed. Back then, it might have been a fifty-year storm.
Well, the other thing is...
I don't think we're flooding anybody.
The other thing is...
I don't know why you keep bringing up Whitestone, what their development, what their regulations...
Whitestone is the development behind it that you're worried about, so...
Hold on, before we keep, the reason...
There is no...
The reason why is because we rely on the data that's given to us by our engineering corp, based on a set of property. Prior to the Whitestone being built, there are surrounding parcels that we had to rely on that data to say, if we put, I don't know how many units are on there, a hundred units, in, in an area, that's going to change the outcome. So we have to rely on data to say, this is what's going to happen with, with that amount of, these amount of units, this amount of people, discharge. I mean, you have all different aspects. So the data that was used at that point in time is the same thing that we're using here. But now we have more updated data, and we have to rely on that, because otherwise, we could just say, what, there's a lot of what-ifs. We, we just don't know. So we have to use what we have at the time, and to, to our knowledge, and make the best decision possible. There are going to be conditions, right? We're not, when, if, if we accept the site plan tonight, that does not mean this is a done, there's still conditions that the builder has to meet, meet. There's still the contractors that are building the homes. They still have to meet those conditions. So because, like you had mentioned, all of these past subdivisions that have been built, we've learned from those mistakes, I hope. I mean, we, that's what the plan is. And we try to make sure we put those conditions in there are strong enough that we know we have some type of recourse there. And to go back to who the ownership, I think that's ultimately what your, what your question is. If something goes wrong, who owns it? Is can T E C take ownership? T E C is our hired, our hired hand. They are our engineering firm. So it would be, T E C isn't on the hook for anything, as far as I'm to be told, right? But, like we talked, that's why I mentioned it. If something happens while Moore and Cameron is doing their production, and there's something happened to Whitestone, Whitestone would have to go against the Moore and Cameron group. It would not be the town. T E C has given us the guidance there that we, we think is going to meet for the, for the public, for, for our residents. The next step would be, like we talked about, is when the street goes to public and we make it a public road, then it becomes town ownership, making sure that we have the, the proper drainage there, the emergency access. But other than that, it's, it's a civil dispute between owners, right? If you, that, that's, that's the point-blank of how, it doesn't, the town, if there's water issues in Whitestone, after we build, and everything is said and done, it becomes... it becomes public, there's no come after the town, correct me if I'm wrong. There's no coming after the town and saying, well, the town approved it. We approved it based on the data that we have and the models that are out there that the state tell us to use, and that's what we have to go by. And if we don't, if we, and I understand you're saying to add more, less land of building to kind of ensure that, but the model says even with what they are building, that it's going to be better than what it currently is. So it's, it's a hard sell to say that just because we put less houses on there, that the, that there would be less chance of water. Whereas the model says, what we have now, on top of that, we have lot, we have lot assignments, we have bylaws that they have to meet the criteria to fit within those lots. We can't say, you can't build a six lot just because.
Right.
Because they're submitting it, they would then, if we say no based on that, they could go to the next level and say, you need to tell us why. And that's at a, in a court system, and we have to hire, hire an attorney, go in. We've had it come to, in front of, I've had it come, I've only been here three years and we've had legal counsel here saying, you guys cannot do that. You need to justify those reasons and we can lose. So that's, you have to follow the bylaws as well as rely on the data.
So we can...
I hope that, I hope that helps a little bit.
I get all that, I, I get, as long as they meet, everything works, the water stays on site. And that's good, right? I mean, because now we don't get affected and, and the plan worked. I was just leery about the plan. I'm not an engineer, I just, all I have is, is from watching the Cameron Group's first, second changes and just have the, not faith, nothing against them, but I just didn't have faith in what's being drawn up and how it's being drawn up because, you know, you, you don't put in ponds that probably cost you $75,000 or more and then take them away and do nothing. And I just say, you know what, the, Whitestone has no problems with drainage right now. Will they have drainage problems when it's over? Whether it be a 100 year storm or a 50 year storm? If you're designing it for a 50 year storm and all of a sudden we have a lot of problems at 100 year storm, and I'm not sure how they even measure that, our concern is, it shouldn't affect us. If you're, I know you're taking our concerns in, obviously because you're talking about them and you know about them. I'm just hoping that when you really sit down and look the project over and, and plan it, like you said, there's rules and regulations you got to go by or you can't say no because your lawyer's going to tell you not to say no because you can't, because they got grounds to stand on.
Well, the point is...
If their plan is good enough and, and they're endorsing it and they don't see nothing, but I'm sure they weren't the ones out digging the holes in the trenches and doing all the things, then there could be a, a problem somewhere. But I guess we won't know to the end and we just want protection. If it doesn't work, why should we be suffered by it? Why should, why should it cost us anything in any way? And like you said, who's going to know? They're telling you it's going to work. If it doesn't work, then I guess we, we cross the bridge when it happens. Really, right? I mean...
Well, the point of the matter is we have to treat everyone fairly. And so in order to do that, we have these standards. And if a developer meets those standards, by and large, the project's going to be able to get to go forward. I would invite you to consider that the back and forth in this situation is not something that you should, you know, look with a jaundiced eye about, but something you should be, be happy about because this is where the developer is responding to our concerns. They're changing, they changed the design multiple times. They, they've addressed at several meetings, like, you know, we've, we've hit them with Legion questions. You know, so, so I mean, I don't see that as developers who are trying to get away with something. I, you know, they've explained how, you know, the, and our own, you know, our own people who are trying to protect us and the town are saying, no, this is, this is, you know, this is better than it, than it is currently, you know. So I would, you know, think of this and contrast it to a developer that's, nope, this is the plan, this is what it's going to be. That's not how this has been at all. And you've been, you've been to many of these meetings, so you've seen it, you've seen it firsthand.
Yeah, I hope it works the way they say it works. I just wanted to know if somebody was going to take responsibility should it not work. But I literally hope it works.
Well, the owner, right, it would be just like every other, every other situation where the owner, you know, the owner of a property that causes a problem to somebody else's property is potentially liable to that property.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, you know, like, it's not that, you know, you're, you're out in the ocean without any, any potential remedy in the event that this happens, which is a hypothetical to begin with, right? So, you know, that's, that's where we're at. But we're, we're in a position where we have, we, we can't just make up, you know, higher regulations than the standards for one developer over another. We can't treat people differently. And, you know, we have to really vet the concerns of the town and we have, we have beaten this water issue, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting and you know, and, you know, and the folks, you know, the records replete with it. So, you know, it is probably the primary, the primary concern of all of us. And, you know, our experts, our experts say better, not even just as good.
We know our concerns.
Sure.
We're putting our, in your hands to look at it. And honestly, I'm going to appreciate, and whatever help turns out, I, I...
We take, we take it seriously, we take it serious.
Out here and do what you're doing.
Yeah.
And have to make the decision, and have to predict it fail because then it doesn't make you guys look good, so I...
Sure, agreed, agreed.
I'm looking for it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know if there's anybody going to take responsibility should that 1% or whatever not work, that it didn't fall, don't fall on us.
Yeah.
If I might try to give you a little bit of comfort because everybody at Whitestone are the closest butters and the people right next door. I will say a couple of things, I'll try to be brief. One, for us and probably for these gentlemen, this is not a terribly complex project. We can hire anybody. We choose Moore and Cameron because they're very, very good. You guys choose Tech, who does a lot of work, they're all around New England because they're very, very good. And they work together and it is always an iterative process. But when I say it's not a terribly complex project, so we've probably built three, four, 5,000 single family homes, townhomes, condos, apartments. I think there's 26 or 2700 homes in all of Groveland. So we've built more than town of Groveland. And I won't say we haven't had any problem for, we've had maybe a broken sprinkler pipe or a little of this, have we ever had water flowing offsite and had a problem like that? No. We built 330 units on the ocean in Lynn. So the ocean is, you know, 50 feet away with the high water table. That was a very complex site, we built it five, no problems. We built 270 units on 50 acres in Northander with extensive wetland system that's right on Route 114 on the Middleton line, no problems. We built a 10 story high rise in Cambridge on a half acre, high water table, very complex site, no problems whatsoever, no water in the basement, nothing. So it's really important to us and to our reputation that only does this project work for the eight families that are going to live there, but also for everybody around there. Because we've been in the same office for 35 years and we're only as good as our reputation, we're only as good as our last project. And I'm hoping five years from now, when we're over in who knows where, Rowley or something, we go to a project, I'm going to drive people over and say, hey, let's drive through the last place we did. And they'll say, wow, this looks great, let's, you know. And hopefully you'll say, you know, my daughter moved in there or I met the new people over there and they were a good addition. And so I can understand, you know, your trepidation about it. And all I can say is, I'll give you our guarantee that we'll do everything to make it work. We'll be the ones responsible, we'll be the ones putting in the road, putting in all the detention. Because what we task the Moore and Cameron Group to do is give us belt and suspenders. Make it as good as possible, make it a little big than it needs to be because we know it's raining more and more. And then they work with TEC, who's looking out for all of you and for the town. And I think when you've got two really good engineering groups, because I'm not an engineer either, we rely on them and then we say, you know, give us the best plan you can. And I think that's what we have here. So I just want to let you know, from our minds, it's a very important project to us, but it's not terribly complex. I think these are all things that they've done before that are standard in the industry and I think will work, you know, really well, so.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You've put your time in.
Yeah, you've been here too.
Joe Schuhovitz, 1103 Alyssa. And so, you know, first off, I want to say, you know, I commend the board, really. It's, you have put in a lot of time, a lot of effort. I think I've been here for each one and, you know, I feel satisfied from a standpoint that you guys are so diligent on it. So, you know, thank you for that. As Dawn was saying, one of the things that does get us a little bit concerned was the changes. And so I feel confident that this is going to go as well as we could expect. I believe in science, science is what I go by in everything that I do in my work. And I feel that that is what's taking place here. But one thing that, we didn't get to see the division, division, the version three that came out and must have went to you guys, so we didn't, you know, get to see some of the answers that maybe you have had the chance to see that we didn't. So one thing that I brought up on the meeting, the 14th, I think, or sometime in November, which was, you know, I think you know it by now, I'm a landscape contractor, so familiar with hardscape surfaces, pervious and impervious surfaces. It's something we face all the time in certain developments and there's certain restrictions at homeowner associations because of the percentage of pervious. And so one of the changes that caught my eye, that I know that you got up and addressed one of the gentlemen, I forget which one, which was the roadway was going to be pervious or impervious. And so my recollection, just mentally, was that a lot of it was going to be a pervious surface. And then the roadway is now impervious, the sidewalk's now pervious, the driveway's pervious. And this is more from a homeowner association and I'm happy to see that in place as well. If somebody puts in a patio and somebody puts in a fire pit and they've got this whole brand new backyard, now you're adding to more impervious surface. And, you know, because of these changes that took place, that's just something that catches my eye as well as Dawn, that it's, and it's been going on forever. I understand that, but it can just get lost in the weeds. So, you know, you can just confer that the studies that were done, the science that says, okay, we're good, but then we added, we switched from pervious to impervious, this one to this one, this one to this one. So you could just see my concern on that.
Yeah, I agree, I can, I absolutely understand your concern. But fortunately, anything that they originally proposed as being impervious wasn't put into the calculation as impervious. They were doing it for more of a climatology, economical, ecologically sound way of...
Kind of the right thing to do.
Right. So that's, that's what they were trying to do for that particular neighborhood. So yeah, it wasn't, was never part of the original calculations. They calculated it all out as impervious.
Yeah, fair, fair enough.
Yes, and then in terms of somebody putting in a patio or more impervious, when that comes before any of the boards, it's something that we have to look at because I know recently 441 Main Street is putting in an additional building and it's the first thing that we asked about, what's happening to the previous calculations? Because it's something that we have to consider because most of Groveland is owner aquifer and we always have to worry about what's happening with water, wastewater management, the stormwater management. So yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. You know, and for Dana, or I'm sorry, down at the end, you know, so, you know, we're, I'm sure everybody was just as upset about Whitestone Village coming in as kind of we are.
I was fine, I just...
Yeah, because I, I'm, I'm living there and I'm just like, I don't know, I think there's, they put in too many houses here, to be honest with you. That's how I feel, I mean, I'm living there, but that's how I feel, so.
So did your neighbor.
The drainage easement that's on the plan, which is, you know, where Dawn is right there, is that drainage easement, is that referencing for, I know that it's for the town to access?
Correct.
Then that's, that's what that represents, right?
Yeah, then that gives the town, town the right to access that plot in the, in the event that they need to access it.
Yeah, nothing's coming in from Whitestone. Okay. And then just a point of reference, it's got nothing to do with Whitestone Village, but just because of the nature work that I do, it says that organic fertilizers only. I mean, this is just, I'm just throwing this out there, that organic fertilizers have phosphorus. You know, phosphorus is a concern all the time. So the organic fertilizers are not controlled as far as phosphorus content. And so if there's a concern for phosphorus, it's just something to take note of. Nitrogen that's in organic fertilizer is water soluble, which is kind of, I'm going to use the word, my reference, instant release. And so if there's more prone for leaching, my opinion, because it moves that much quicker because it's water soluble element, that's what can happen. Where if you use synthetic fertilizers that are water insoluble and sulfur coated urea, as for instance, then it just doesn't move as fast through the soil. So just take that into consideration when you're recommending organic versus synthetic, that there are advantages at times for synthetic products as opposed to organic products. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If I could just clarify a couple of points.
Sure.
Mr. Neves did a great job. We designed everything for the sidewalks and driveways to be pervious on the plans, but the actual calculations, we assumed everything was impervious. So from the start, we added that belt and suspender on to the calculations in case that you weren't satisfied with the permeable pavement, which you weren't, so we could just make the switch. And then with regards to the patios and additions and gazebos and cabanas and pools and all the stuff that homeowners do on homeowner lots, as they're entitled to do, we have assumed in the calculations, in addition to what is drawn for driveways, sidewalks, roads and homes, all of the yard space is also assumed to be 25% pervious. So we're accounting for the stuff to happen. There's a lot of redundancy and factors of safety built in.
Thank you. All right. We do have some people, I, I think a lot of what we had is covered. Were there any questions online that have not been asked yet?
Hi, this is Linda Thomaselli, 1007 Alyssa.
Hi Linda, go ahead.
Hi. First of all, thank you, thank you all for all of the, the time and the effort you're putting into this. I have a few questions and a couple of comments. First, you know, I certainly agree with a number of the comments that have been made by Joe and, and Dawn. And I would ask that kind of stop pointing fingers at Whitestone to compare a loss of trees across School Street to water on your property. And loss of property value is upsetting, little insulting. So I think we should just focus on the very real concern of the people at, at Whitestone about water. And having said that, I, I do understand and again, appreciate all the work that has gone in by the board and by the engineers. There's one question in particular that I've never really gotten comfortable with and maybe TEC or Cameron could address, which is the difference between runoff and groundwater. This project is going to require the clearing of many, many trees, which as I understand it from a little basic research, absorb hundreds of thousands of gallons of water a year. Does the plan in place account for that as well as the runoff?
Hey Linda, so to answer your question, runoff is simply the volume of water that's going across an area. So usually like Scott has referenced, it's a, it's a volume over a period of time. So generally, if the coverage of land changes from, for example, trees to pavement, pavement's obviously going to generate more runoff than the trees because as you referenced, the trees do absorb an amount of stormwater over time. So to mitigate that issue, that's where these basins come in. And the idea of these basins is to take this water, hold this water on the site itself, either infiltrate it or slowly release it back out the same points it normally would. So when we look at these models, the difference in the values you're getting from trees versus pervious, you have to mitigate that somehow and that's where these basins come from essentially. So the way that we've looked at this entire system, we've been able to determine from... So, the way that we've looked at this entire system, we've been able to determine, from their calculations and their models, that stormwater will be released in a slower manner than it is today as a natural state. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Partly, and I'm sorry if I'm not getting this completely, but what does that mean, bottom line, in terms of groundwater? I mean, I understand runoff, I understand the runoff being captured, I understand the runoff eventually being absorbed and released, kind of adding to the groundwater.
Yes.
But what about all the water that would have been absorbed by those trees? Not instantly, not runoff-related?
So, the groundwater table itself, when they create these basins, especially infiltration basins and rain gardens, which are on this site currently, as the plan is shown, you have to have a certain separation to groundwater. So, the groundwater table exists throughout all the site, and it varies throughout the site. That's why they do test pits throughout the site before you ever do your design. So where these basins are located, there's enough distance below the bottom of the basin to allow groundwater to be accepted in a manner that will allow the volume to go down efficiently enough where it makes sense to put in a basin. That's why these basins sometimes get moved around throughout design development. So, regarding the groundwater in the pre-development state, currently, the groundwater is probably actually receiving less than it would once it gets these basins in. These basins are gonna help increase the amount of groundwater infiltration throughout the site.
Is that, I'm really sorry, is that a good thing? I mean, it sounds like that's intended to be a good thing.
So that's part of why the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards are set up in that manner. So, when you do a development, it used to be, you know, you put in a ground, you put in a catch basin, and it shoots it right out back into basically a side yard or something like that, and then there is no real groundwater infiltration, because all this water used to get sent directly, basically, to waterways and wetlands. By putting it into a basin before it gets released out, you're infiltrating and getting groundwater back where it used to be to begin with. So, you're basically keeping the water on the site it's supposed to be, rather than sending it somewhere else.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you very much.
Sure.
So, another question, and I want to follow up on a discussion, a question first asked by the chair, going to the problem of what happens if, and hopefully not when, something goes wrong. There are requirements around long-term stormwater management plans, and they carry responsibility and accountability. Where is that exactly going to lie? Is it going to be part of the HOA responsibility?
Yes, based on the way the documents, as far as I'm receiving them, are written. Yeah.
Yes, Linda, it'd be the conditions of the HOA.
Okay.
And those, those materials are available for the public, right?
The, no, the HOA is still just a draft. The HOA right now is just a draft.
It's not, but it's not-
It's not finalized.
No, I mean, it's not available to be looked at.
Oh, 100%, if you discuss it at a meeting, it's-
Right.
It's in our package.
Right, so it's in our package, so it can be seen, so you can see these things.
The current draft is in the, is in the meeting minutes.
And the packets are available on the website.
Correct.
Right, that's what I thought, okay.
But Linda, those drafts are just a draft, they, there are still conditions that will be added in there, and that will be refined. But that, that HOA is not the final draft whatsoever. That is an initial draft, that it's very generic used, and then we'll update that with whatever conditions we seem fit.
But that provides some teeth as to, to answer your question about, you know, who's gonna be responsible, and the HOA is gonna have a large degree of responsibility about it, at least in terms of how these, these documents have been drafted thus far.
And Linda, I would encourage you, if you haven't looked, to take a look, because there are stormwater maintenance logs, there are sign-offs, there are all the rules and regulations of the runoff, groundwater, or butter, things like that, that are in there. So, feel free to read through, and as we come up with, let us know if you have other concerns or conditions that you would like to see, and the board would definitely can discuss it, but it'll all be part of the conditions of the HOA.
Okay.
Hope that helps.
Um, I think that it does help. I, I think, I just want to make one final general comment, and it goes to this issue of whether, if certain set of regulatory requirements are met, you all are kind of locked into a necessary response. I've made this point in my prior comments, but, but I think it's, it's really a critical one. First of all, I think that every, you know, it appears that great effort has been made here to, I don't want to say accommodate, but respond to this proposal. I mean, in many levels. The road's supposed to be perpendicular, it's not. Supposed to be 400 feet, it's not. The offset streets, I guess, are exactly 150 feet, hopefully. It's supposed to be, the development's supposed to be-
Hold on, not hopefully, right?
Along with the nature.
Hold on one second. Not hopefully, that, we just talked with TEC today, and they said it is, not, it's not hopefully, it's been measured, right?
Yes, no, based on the plans, yeah.
So that's not a hopefully?
Well, no, the plan, yeah, the plan says, well, it happens to say exactly 150 feet, so I'm assuming it is exactly-
Well, and then, when it's as built, it's gonna have to be that too.
Okay. And, you know, let's face it, this development is not really aligned with the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's, well, it's-
How is that not, how is it not aligned with the rest of the neighborhood? I, I don't agree with that at all.
Okay, well, we can disagree.
Linda, apologize. Linda, apologize, just, you go ahead and finish what you, what do you have to say?
No, no, it's fine.
No, I mean, it's, and, well, it doesn't matter, because it, it just doesn't. But my point, my point is that ultimately, everything comes back to the question whether the overarching requirements are met, and those are protecting the residents, the existing residents, and in particular, in a case like this, the abutters. And that includes protecting the value of their land and their property, and making sure that nothing that is proposed is, quotes, injurious to people or property. So, as long as that remains, sort of the, the overarching goal, well, I'll, I'll just stop there, that needs to remain the overarching goal. And, you know, I, like everyone else who has spoken today, I sincerely hope that if this project is approved and goes forward as proposed, that it will not result in damage to surrounding residents. And I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Chris, did you have something? No, okay. Now, did you want to-
Oh, no, I mean, we talked, the question about the character of the project versus the surrounding, you know, area, it's a similar number of buildings, it's an area that the master, that the town master plan, which was, you know, approved last fall, says is an area that's, that's targeted for development. The, the, the sort of, the offset of the road is similar to the other, to the other roads near it. There are a whole slew of things that make this very much like the rest of, like the rest of the area. And so, I don't, that's why I don't agree that it's not in keeping with that point, just that point. But that was, that was, that was it.
I don't think it's gonna devalue anyone's houses, I don't think, I think there's another million bucks to start.
No, I think it'll increase value.
No, it's not a-
The only other thing-
It's not a question of devaluing, that's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about protecting the value of, of property against flood damage, just to be clear, not talking about, you know, the development as such.
Didn't they answer all your questions about that?
Understood.
Yeah, in the, you had questions about that, that you said were satisfied, too. And we've, we've been really mindful and spent a ton of time talking about that very same issue.
Yeah, I, yeah, we've covered it.
Linda, I just wanted to let you know, talk about the footage, the 150 feet, and the way the plan reads. These plans, this will be monitored by TEC as, as the subdivision goes in, all of this, these measurements are measured out, and they need to be exact. If it's offset by five feet, TEC will notice that, and they will call it in, and we do not approve the subdivision. That's how it works. If there's something that is said on this site plan, if it's not accounted for the way the plan is approved, if there's any type of deviation from that, then there is bond that's been being held, this does not get approved, they don't get to, they don't get to move forward. So that, that's your reassurance, that when the plan's submitted, if they have to, something that they have to change, they have to come back and resubmit and tell us what changes they're gonna be. So, if that street is 150 feet, or they're moving it to 200 feet, that, those are things that they have to come in and tell us, they don't just get to do that on their own. And that's why we have our peer engineers of TEC that go and make sure that these are being followed. Hope that helps as well.
Okay.
Did you have something? No, he just did, okay. All right.
Close the meeting?
What's that?
We close in the public?
Yep.
Unless there are any other, unless there are any other comments?
No other comments? You guys, you don't have any comments?
No, I'm fine.
Rebecca, did you have any other comments?
A motion to close the public meeting, public side.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing for 181 R. School Street. Any discussion? No? All right, to close, that's all we have to do is close it out, correct?
Correct.
All right. Motion made and seconded to close 181 R. School Street Public Hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Okay. Now the real work begins. You're welcome, thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out.
You guys spent a lot of time, we appreciate it.
Do you want to, are we gonna vote?
Thank you. We'll do our best.
Appreciate you, appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming out.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it, thank you.
We definitely need bigger audiences.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
We're gonna take a three-minute recess, so people can take a health break real quick. We'll be right back.
I don't want to go live.
I understand.
You're back.
Thank you. All right, welcome back. Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, February 4th. All right, so we have voted to close the public hearing on 181 R. School Street, so now we will move into discussion about decision that the board needs to make after taking everything into consideration. Just a reminder, this is just a, this is not set in stone, this decision is to accept the site plan, and then we would then discuss further conditions that would need to be met at a, at a future date as well. And we talked about the HOA, things like that, so, just to let the public know that it's not over and done with, will be still plenty more to talk about for 181 R. School Street, so.
I put a motion in that we accept the site plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, now we're gonna go to discussion. You have any?
So the, so the approval will be subject to the conditions to be discussed at a later date?
Right.
Yeah, we'll have to amend that, we'll have to amend the motion.
Yeah, amend the motion, yeah.
So we'll be able to amend the-
So if you are going- Excuse me, so if you are going to issue an approval under the subdivision control law, section 81 U. of chapter 41, you have 90 days to issue a written decision. So, after the subdivision plan is submitted and approved, or conditionally approved, the planning board must then file the written decision, which has all of the conditional details. So you can, in fact, approve with conditions to be discussed at the next meeting, and you have, or to be discussed, and you have 90 days to then issue that decision.
Yeah, what she said.
You sounded just as eloquent as she did, Brad.
Thank you.
So you, do you want to remove to accept the site plan with conditions to be, except to be discussed at a later date?
Approve the definitive subdivision plan and stormwater land disturbance permit.
Exactly what she said. So, but, conditions to be followed up at another, you know, at the next meeting?
I'm okay with that amendment.
Linda, what is it, subdivision law, do we have to-
Under the subdivision control law.
Yeah.
Were there any exceptions to, that variances or-
There's two waivers.
Two waivers, sorry.
So you would need to approve the two waivers as well.
The one was the-
The distance between the streets, and the other was more of a technicality in terms of the conditions. I will default to the engineer to pull those out.
We, we actually reduced it to just the one, because the other one was for the pervious pavement for the sidewalk, and we pulled that off. So it's just the one waiver.
So then it's just the distance?
Yep, to reduce the, on one side of the street, go from 400 feet to 300 feet. That's the Ann Street.
And that would be on your plan, do you have it listed on the front page?
Cover sheet.
As to what, the section of the law that you're-
Under section, yep. Chapter 70, section 4.3, capital H, 5.
What chapter was that?
Chapter 70.
Thank you.
Is that in here? 4.?
4.3, sub H, 5.
Number T here, boy. Is it in our paperwork here somewhere?
I'm sorry?
We have it in our paperwork here somewhere?
It should be on the, one of the plan pages, so.
Plan pages.
It would be usually on the front page, but it looks like it might be on page number two.
It's on page one in the bottom left corner.
Oh yes, waiver. So under abbreviations on the front page, it's the waiver subdivision regulation, chapter 70, 70.4, 0.3, H5, new intersection along one side of the existing street.
Cover sheet.
And that's our only waiver of the subdivision?
That's it.
I forgot. There was a technicality with the pervious versus impervious which they've removed entirely, so it is just the one waiver.
Yep.
So.
Chapter 70, new intersection is on one side. And between Ann and Georgia is 300 as well, right? As well as Carolina and Abbott? You guys seeing that? The cover sheet?
I'm not.
So on the cover sheet.
So there is, the required is 400 feet apart from Minor Street, opposed is 300 feet. So this is the 300. Between Ann and Georgia Street is 300.
Right.
We have between Carolina and Abbott Street at 300.
Right.
We have Doris Street and Wilbert are 217.
Yeah.
So it's, there's a precedent there. Especially in the area.
Right, exactly.
And TEC had no problems with site?
Visibility. And the traffic, light traffic, that's what you said earlier, the traffic is minimal.
So now let's make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Well, let's finish, let's finish the first one first before we go to the waiver. That's the waiver, that's separate. We still have to have the proper motion for condition, conditionally approving the site plan.
And the.
Review.
And the land disturbance.
So it will be, it will be all one because the waiver is part of your approval for the subdivision. So it will be to approve the definitive subdivision and land disturbance permit. It's stormwater and manag, land disturb, stormwater and management, stormwater management land disturbance permit and the waiver from section 70, 70.
Point 4.3, H5.
Right.
Subject to.
Next time, can you have this all written out so I can just read it?
Yes, I will definitely do that.
We'll muddle through. This is good work.
Alright, so we need to approve, conditionally.
Conditionally approve the definitive subdivision and stormwater.
Chapter 41, section 81 T. Also the.
Along with the waiver.
We'll get that.
Which is the subdivision regulation, chapter 70, 70.4, 0.3, H5.
I would've thought the ex-chair would have already had this all set up and know what.
So if you look at the agenda, that'll give you it. So you're going to approve the definitive subdivision for 181 rear school street. For, and stormwater management and land, land disturbance permit, subject to the waiver and then cite that with conditions.
Okay. So. Make a motion.
I was motioning.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table.
But we need to, alright, so amend it. You gotta amend it to all, everything you need.
Well, we, I was adding the waiver in there just then.
Okay. Go for it.
Again?
Yep. Say it all, say it all, so it's all in one line, so we have good notes.
Alright.
You could approve the waiver first. How about you do that? If you would like to approve the waiver, approve the waiver, then approve the definitive subdivision plan and special permit.
Trying to learn here. I'm new to this. I'm trying to learn. You're cutting corners.
I'm trying to help you along here. So, motion to accept the waiver, the subdivision regulation, chapter 70, 70.4, 0.3, H5, with new intersections along one side of the existing street required 400 feet apart from a minor street, opposed is 300 feet apart from Ann Street. Okay, so that's a motion to accept that waiver.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Waiver granted. Now.
The next motion would be to accept.
Conditionally.
Conditionally.
Conditionally accept the site plan and land disturbance permit.
And stormwater management.
And stormwater management, with conditions to be eyeing out at the next meeting.
Or one or two.
Or subsequently.
Yeah.
I like your words.
There you go.
Legal definitions.
Cool with words.
Alright. Motion has been made and se, made. Anyone want to second? Second. Motion made and seconded to accept everything that Brad just said. Definitive subplan, definitive subdivision plan as well as the stormwater management and land disturbance permit.
Subject to conditions to be.
Subject to, conditionally.
To be subsequently.
Eyeing out at the next meeting.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
We'll save that for the next meeting.
Jason?
Good.
Good.
Okay.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Welcome. You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Put in some work.
We'll see you again.
Nice job. It's a good process. Thank you so much for your time on this. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Thank you for hearing us out.
Now Rebecca's work is just starting.
Next.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thanks, Bill.
Appreciate you.
Okay.
Next up.
Etsy.
Public hearing. Uh, continued, 441 Main Street, Estee Park. Public hearing according to general law, mass, mass general laws, chapter 48, as amended for the application made by Estee Park Trust for the premises located on 441 Main Street, map 24 lot 009, uh, located in the residential two zoning district for a site plan review, section 50, 13 dot 2A1, and a special permit under the aqua four protection bylaw, section 56 dot 2H of the Groveland zoning bylaw. Um, we, this was on the agenda last meeting. Uh, the applicant has requested for a continuance. They're doing some more research on what they need to do, so, uh, float a motion to continue.
First you need to open to public, open the public hearing, then you should motion to continue.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on 441 Main Street, Estee Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on 441 Main Street, Estee Park.
Second.
To.
To, to our.
Specific date.
To our next, our next meeting.
They would like to do the, the, after March 11th, so it would be your next following meeting after the fourth would be the 18th of March.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on 441 Main Street until March 18th.
I second that.
Discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Alright. Next up. Time is it? Nine o'clock? Okay. Discussion, comprehensive master plan, discussion of implementation plan. Uh, so Brad, you had brought this forward a couple of meetings ago to start putting this on our agenda for discussion, which is great because we do. That's part of our, part of our jobs.
I'd like to see this when we have, you know, when we have not much on our plate.
Okay.
There's a lot to discuss, there's a lot to digest that.
I agree. I think that we can have this as a regular agenda item and talk about it when we, when we can and kind of go forward from there. And then if there's follow-ups, we can go from, go move on, so.
It absolutely should be.
Yep. Cool.
And I would also recommend that the board take an opportunity to read the memo that Annie Schindler had put together that's in your packet. It does give you a little bit more details of all of the, um, action items that were listed as part of the comprehensive master plan. So it's a really good starting point. So we need to get a chance to take a look at those so that we can further initiate the conversation.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Alright, Rebecca. Your turn to talk, town planner update.
Yes, I will make it very brief. Um, I just wanted to update the board. For those who did not attend, I know that two of you were able to attend the housing workshop that we held last Thursday. This was specifically in regards to MBTA 3A zoning as well as housing needs in general. Uh, it was a very productive meeting. It was more so focused on the next step that the consultant needs to focus on. So the first step was kind of just, you know, introducing the concept, making sure that people were aware of what needed to be done and the requirements under the law. This last meeting was more so focused on trying to identify a certain area or overlay areas that we should consider as part of our housing initiative in moving forward with zoning. Now that they've received some of the feedback from that meeting as well as a survey that they put out, they are taking all of that and they are now crafting zoning. Um, that zoning comes before you as the planning board and will go through the public hearing process. So you have a, an opportunity to discuss this in greater detail, so I won't really elaborate. But the next step would be for then, once you have an opportunity to review, to go to town meeting for a vote. So the consultant is in the process of drafting those. They have asked a little bit more about design guidelines because again, when we talk about zoning, like we have this evening, we have the zoning that's in place and it gives you what you can do and what you can't do. But it doesn't really give you design guidelines. So design guidelines give you a little bit more, um, leeway in terms of what types of housing you'd like to see and some of the landscaping that you'd like to be considered and some of those additional details. So that's something that we should consider as well. So I do expect the consultant and his associates to come before the planning board when we go through this process to present the zoning to the planning board. And if there was any individuals that were unable to attend the meeting, we do have a project page up on the website. Um, and it does give you an opportunity to contact the consultant as well as gives you my contact information and Annie's contact information. So if there is anybody that has additional questions or wants to voice additional concerns, there's still more time to do so. And lastly, I think one of the biggest takeaways that we had from that discussion and kind of was prevalent this evening is that we are talking about zoning. We are not talking about a, a housing production plan or construction of any sort. So an overlay allows an individual to move forward with the zoning that is approved by the community. Because it's an overlay, if you're an existing house and you meet the existing zoning, you do not have to change. You do not have to change your house. You do not need to knock it down. You have the opportunity to keep everything the way that it is or you can elect to move forward with the zoning that's put in place. So there is an opportunity for people to understand that it is not something that's going to require a massive tear down of any of the areas that are being proposed. And it's also to remind folks that we are not precluded from following through with the law. So if we have title five requirements, you must meet your title five requirements. If you have setback requirements, you must meet your setback requirements. Just because we're zoning for something doesn't make it a buildable lot, just like we talked about this evening. So if it's not a buildable lot, you can't build upon it. That being said, it could count towards our district and it could count towards what we're required for compliance in terms of the law. So zoning is zoning. It is not building. And I think that was a really big point that they had discussed at the last meeting that I just wanted to make sure to remind individuals. And then the last part that I wanted to update the board is that, in line with that, we have not a bunch, but a lot, a bunch of zoning amendments that will be coming before the planning board for the upcoming annual town meeting. We've talked about a few of them being battery storage, uh, shared parking. Um, we do need to update the general, uh, the zoning bylaw to reflect select board instead of Board of Selectmen, which was done improperly last year. We have Billis Way, street acceptance. We have Katy Lane, street acceptance. Um, so we have the ADU zoning as well as the MBTA zoning. And then, um, I believe there's one other, but all of those will go before the planning board. Because we need to advertise this and we have laws that we need to abide by in terms of making sure it's in the newspaper prior to the meetings, I do need the board to determine what date they would like to hold those public hearings. So we have March 4th, which would be, uh, your first meeting in March, or March 18th, which would be your second meeting in March. But we need to meet one of those days.
It's gonna be a long night, so we're gonna be comfortable with nothing on the agenda.
That's what I was thinking. We already did, you know, the, the condition, the last.
We could potentially start on the 4th and then if there's a need to continue something, it does give us a little bit more wiggle room. So that might be the preferred approach.
Yeah, I think 4th.
Yeah.
4th.
Oh yeah.
So we'll put the newspaper advertisement and make sure that everybody gets their language submitted because once it is posted, we will need to make sure that all of that information is in the office as well as with the town clerk so that if anyone has any questions, they have time to view the materials prior to the public hearing. So we will be communicating with you a lot over the next few weeks just to give you all of the information so that you're fully aware and that if individuals come and approach you, you'll have all of the information at your fingertips as well. So there'll be a lot of correspondence, but if there is any additional information that the board members need, please don't hesitate to reach out. And those are all the updates I had.
It's helpful.
Thank you. So, um.
Meetings. We've got.
The 4th.
No other, so there's nothing else, uh.
Right.
Items, not reasonable, anticipated time of posting, okay? So next meetings. We are in the 4th. We are not meeting.
On the 18th.
Because that's on.
It's school vacation.
That's school vacation week.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be the 4th.
Are we not having a meeting on the 25th?
Do we want to do the 25th?
In addition to the 4th?
Keep it tentatively, nothing public, no public hearing on the 25th.
You could potentially have a, a, a meeting on the 25th. I do know that the school committee is also having their budget presentation on the 25th. So I know that, uh, Jason will be unable to attend as will I, but Annie could certainly step in and you could start to go over the conditions for 181 rear school street if you did in fact want to move forward with that. But obviously if the board does not want to meet, you, you do not have to. The 441 has been continued to the 18th and we're not advertising any of the other public hearings until the, the, the 4th. But just know that March is gonna be a busy month, so maybe that, you can take the opportunity if you'd like to kind of.
Yeah, we'd, I mean, because you're still talking, conditions still need to be discussed. And the, the, on, in the month of March, we have the 4th, it's all booked for all the zoning, all the zoning.
We got 90 days.
Yeah, but time has a way of moving right along.
We're throwing away 30 of them.
Yeah.
Because we have no, well, we have 90 days from tonight.
90 days from the.
So we're not meeting again until one month from now and then that meeting is gonna be all zoning. Then the following meeting, the other, the following meeting is gonna be, Estee Park will be a part of the conversation. So we could have conditions talked about as well that night with Estee Park. But, um, maybe the 25th, we don't want to meet next week, right? To talk to conditions, right?
I think it's okay to give ourselves a little bit of a.
It'll also allow us to give you a draft to work with so that we can get all of the backgrounds, the finding of facts and some of the general conditions that we have in place.
Okay.
So we can provide you a little bit of a draft to work with as well. And we can try and get that to you. Maybe I would say if you give us till the end of, um, next week so that even though it might be school vacation week, you might have some time or during the weekend, you can take a look at it and you might be prepared for the 25th to have some feedback to kind of add to the conversation.
Something around discussion, yeah. Are you good on the 25th?
I, I am good on the 25th, yes.
And we know Jason's out. Are you good on the?
I can do it.
Are you good on the 25th?
I can do it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that we probably should. I know there were meeting the following week, but that's just to talk about zoning stuff and that's gonna be, then you said that's a meeting in itself.
Yeah. No, it doesn't hurt. And I mean, if it's a short meeting, then it's a short meeting. So what?
Agreed.
You know, like.
Or if we have nothing, we can, we can cancel.
But, yeah. But we won't have nothing. We'll have at least.
We'll have something.
At least something.
We'll have something. Alright. So next meeting is going to be March 25th.
February.
February 25th. Okay, thank you. Sorry. It's still on my, the March calendar shows 25th of February, 25th of February, the 4th of March.
The 18th.
The 18th of March. Did she need more than that? Did Annie need more dates than just three? Did she say more? And then we would.
It will be the two. And then if something happens, we might need to schedule a meeting soon thereafter if a decision is not rendered. The technically, the warrant would close by the end of March. Um, we'd like to do it a little bit sooner because I do need to get that before the select board for them to review. Um, and obviously since these are, some of them are a little bit more contentious in terms of a discussion, it would be important for us to then also make sure that the public is aware of them and try to advocate and provide as much outreach prior to annual town meeting. So if anything, it would be that we meet on the 18th and maybe potentially if something happens and we're not able to make a decision, we even meet that month, uh, that week, um, just to kind of finalize. Hopefully that's not the case. I'm hoping that it will be smooth and organized, but obviously I don't want to deter conversation and discussion.
Yep. How many zoning changes do we?